We are good.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the August already meeting of the Laconia zoning board of adjustments. With that, can we call the roll, please?
Gail Ober.
Here.
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
Mike Foot.
Here.
Staff in attendance, Rob Mora and Karen Sator taking the minutes. Absent with notification are Jane LaRoche, Marcia Hayward, and Roland Mayhew.
Okay. The next is the acceptance of minutes from the previous meeting, starting with July 14th, 2020. Everybody get a chance. Go ahead.
Do I wait for the motion to accept them, or do I make any recommended changes now?
You can make the recommended changes now.
Okay. Under item 5.1, 41 through 63 Elm Street, when I voiced my objection to having a second emergency meeting for that particular property, I don't know what this sentence even means in English, but what I said was that I felt one emergency meeting had already been called. I didn't want a second emergency meeting called because I felt it showed favoritism to a large developer. That's what I said. And I said that specifically because I wanted it part of the record. That's.
And so we would scratch, there was enough denials?
That's what I'm saying. That doesn't even make any sense.
It wasn't even the discussion of the denials, so.
There was never, yeah, so.
So now it's recommendations, a motion to accept the minutes?
As, okay.
I'll second that if the amendment gets made or something. Could you read back to me what you intend on changing that to?
Okay, what I have is it would, G. Ober does not see the reason for the emergency meeting. One emergency meeting had already been called. He felt the second emergency meeting was showing favoritism towards a developer.
A specific large developer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll second that on the condition that that particular notation has been made.
Any other discussion of that, the minutes for 7:14? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Okay. All right, minutes of 7:20. Any additions, corrections?
No, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the July 20th.
As written.
As written here.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All those in favor? Okay, those minutes pass. All right, before I start the rest, the I want to mention to everybody out here, we only have a four-person board tonight, okay? As it is a quorum, it does bring up special voting situations. Where the voting situation is, if it's a two-two vote, the vote is not a positive vote. Okay? So you need at least a three-one vote for something to pass. All right? That's clear. So what I do at the beginning of the meeting in a situation like this, I ask everybody in the public who are applicants if they would like to be heard tonight. Now, once you say you would love to be heard tonight, I give you an option to reschedule to the next meeting, okay? But once you say yes, we continue to go through. So this is your only opportunity to say you would like to postpone it to the next meeting, move it to the next meeting, whatever verbiage best suits you. Is that clear by everybody? All right, anybody wish to move their application to the next meeting?
I do.
You would, and which application is yours, sir?
My name is James B. Echo. I'm a lawyer here, and we were here last time for the Melvilles.
33 Clearwater.
Okay.
And I had contacted your staff person, who is very nice, by the way, and told them that we would like to postpone it to the next hearing. She suggested that I come. I'm here to request that we postpone it to the next hearing. So thank you if you can do that.
We can.
I don't think, I don't know. Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion.
No, we'll just do the notice of action to indicate that due to the
Short board.
Short board that you were offered that opportunity and you accepted.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll see you a week or two.
You'll still be in the same position on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
And for everybody out, if you are here as in a butter or something, that was for 33 Clearwater, they're going to be not heard tonight, okay? They will be heard at the the absence of something else happening. They should be heard at the next meeting.
September 20.
September 20, and they'll be, the first, like tonight, would have been first on the agenda, okay?
Is there a possibility to speak to an issue in that regard?
No.
No, sir. Because we don't open the application, and if we open the application, it would have to continue as that way, so. Okay? Any other applicant wish to postpone their application? Let the record indicate, no one else wished to move their application, therefore, we're going to start and with that. Okay? Okay. Next on the agenda.
Clear the room, Steve.
I'm sorry. Okay. You can thank Roland. Okay. The next application is application 2021-0031. It's a variance. 196 Pogus Park Road, variance application, is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-35A, front setback to allow for the replacement of a non-conforming residential structure with a more conforming residential structure with attached grod and deck portion of which will be in the front setback. The applicant is here, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, zoning board members. For the record, Stephen Smith, Steve Smith and Associates of Division of Dubois &amp; King. I think I promised the last time I wouldn't be back, but that doesn't work. A little conflict in some meetings and so.
Always welcome here, Steve.
So I'm back. And I'm here tonight representing Steve Starr at 196 Pogus Park Road. It's in the residential single-family district. And I am requesting a variance for a front setback. A little history, I have been in here on many occasions for Pogus Park Road for variances with an attempt to make the redevelopment of lots more conforming. And also, obviously, it's on the lake. We have to deal with shoreline protection, which is another ordinance on top of the City of Laconia's ordinance. This particular lot happens to be a non-conforming lot, like most of the lots down there. I'm going to guess that almost all of them are non-conforming in one way or another. This lot, in this zone, would require 40,000 square feet of frontage with one utility. They have municipal sewer. They do not have community water. It would require 100 feet of frontage. The setbacks would be 25, 10, and 15 if this property wasn't on the lake. And because it's on the lake, the rear setback, which would normally be 15 in this zone, is a 50-foot buffer, which is basically a setback. It's called a buffer, but you have to stay out of it with structures. Certain types of structures, I should say, under your ordinance, under the State of New Hampshire's regulation, you're supposed to keep the whole structure out. The existing lot here isn't non-conforming in the fact that it only has 20% of the land area required in this zone. The lot is only 8,396 square feet. And it only has 60 feet of frontage, 60% of the required frontage in this zone, which would have been 100. The house is also non-conforming in terms of the side setback for the house. It's only seven and a half feet, and it requires 10. The shoreline setback, which is 50, and actually, it's 50 under the city's ordinance because of the shoreline. It only has 27.5 feet to the structure. And the other issue here with shoreline is that not only is the structure penetrating the 50-foot buffer, there is living space within that structure. And the state does not allow living space to penetrate the buffer. If you're going to build a building today, you have to keep the living space, or they want you to keep the living space, out of that buffer area. You can ask for variances for that, but if you can keep it out of there, they request that you keep it out of there. In this particular case, because we already have a structure that's in the 50-foot buffer, we could ask for a waiver from them and leave living space within the buffer. We'd have to make the lot more conforming somehow. There's standards that they have to meet. And also, the shed that's on the property, that's totally within the 10-foot side setback. And I represent, all of that is represented on your existing conditions plan. You will see the shed that's in the setback. You'll see the side of the house which is in the setback, and you will see the 50-foot waterfront buffer, which is both now local and state regulation. You'll see that the structure along with the deck is in the buffer. In your ordinance, if the deck is, I think it's, is it six and a half feet, Rob? It has to be at least eight feet or?
Seven.
Seven feet. If it's seven feet above the ground, it's okay to have that within the buffer. And if you, when we get to it and review the proposed improvements plan, you'll see that I have left the deck, reconfigured the deck, and that is in the buffer, but it meets that requirement for the city. The new proposal, we meet the side setbacks from the structure. We are proposing to completely get rid of the shed itself. That'll eliminate that non-conformity. We're proposing to move the building, the living space of the building back behind the 50-foot buffer. You'll note on the proposed, on the existing conditions plan that the basic structure from the stairway out is only 27.5 feet from the water. And in this particular case, you can see that the waterfrontage, they have an inlet area that was constructed some time ago where there's a beach area. If that wasn't constructed back when it was constructed, probably in the '60s when this property was developed, that waterfront buffer would be, probably meet, or this house would probably meet those standards. But because that was dug out and that shoreline is back there, it pushes that waterfront buffer back. And on that existing conditions plan, right now, it's 27 and a half feet to the stairs going up. And on the new proposal, the deck itself is 40 feet away, and the stairs is 40 feet away from the waterfront buffer. So we've made a vast improvement under the state regulations. Also, a vast improvement because we moved the building out of the buffer, both town and state, and the deck meets the city's ordinance. What happens when we do that, because we have that 50-foot rear setback now, which is the lake instead of 15, we're pushing into the road setback, which is something that has happened on almost every application we've had in here. In this particular case, though, it's not too bad. We're maintaining setbacks from the road right-of-way, 22.55 feet in one corner, and where the entrance into the house and that small porch is, 20.94 feet. So it's really under less than five feet that we're violating into that front setback. It allows to, the house to have proper parking in on the lot, not parking out on the road. You'll, I have provided pictures of this site and labeled, numbered them. If you look at the pictures and look at the existing conditions plan, that will orient you as to where the pictures were taken. Unfortunately, when you look at pictures, you don't see the elevation difference. And under the existing, the existing plan, basically for parking, they had to pull off into the lawn or pack in the right-of-way itself. There was no driveway really to the lot, just a walkway down to where the house was originally located. We have filled the application out, cited the section that we're asking for the variance. We've answered all five questions. I'm happy to read them if you want me to. I believe that they meet the standards for the request of a variance. In this particular case, due to the non-conformity of the lot, the size of the lot, the year that it was developed, way back before zoning was in place, it would be very difficult for it to meet today's standards. With that, I'm happy to answer questions or move forward, however the chair would like to.
Any questions of the applicant?
Just one confirmation question. So the only thing you really, you need a variance for tonight is from the front setback?
Front setback, yes. We've
We don't need to do a density variance because you're, because the lot's not big enough?
No, we meet the density, actually.
Okay, and 10,000 square feet? I mean, you were saying this lot needs 40,000 square feet because it has
Well, that's a non-conforming lot, so it's pre-existing. You don't have to give us a variance for that.
That's what I needed to know. So the non-conformance is pre-existing?
Yeah, I wouldn't be in here asking for the variance if it wasn't pre-existing because it should meet the standards if it's not non-conforming.
All right.
Okay.
Do you, do you need a, do you need anything from the state to go forward?
We have a shoreline permit from the state.
You do, okay.
But I will tell you that I have asked for a modification, and that's why I asked it to be tabled at the last meeting. The architect wanted to make that porch a little bigger to fit in with the rest of the house, so it changed the setbacks to the road. I have submitted that, and I'm waiting for them to give us that approval. We do have a shoreline approval, but that was with that smaller entrance. Okay? It was on the first plan I submitted.
On the roadside of the house.
Yes, same location. It was just smaller.
That's all I had.
Anybody else have any questions of the applicant at this time?
I would like to add, if the state comes back and says they can't do that porch the way they wanted to do it, then we'll have to take it off, and it'll be even more conforming. And actually, it probably won't be more conforming because it's just a longer porch now and stuff, but.
It's going to stick out as far as, just not as wide.
Right, right. We made as just look funny with the architecture of the house. Yes, Mike?
The porch being what's labeled as deck here?
No.
No, the deck's on the water side, and it's not labeled as porch, but you will see the crosshatching for the roof over that entryway, which would be in the northerly corner of the building in the front. There's a little stairway from the driveway that comes up into the porch area.
Sure.
And due to the fact that, the reason why we don't have to look at that is because of the height of the deck. That's what he was talking about, the different heights. If it's seven feet, I thought you said, then it's
Yeah, we don't have to ask for anything relief on the deck because we meet your standards under that buffer for a deck.
Okay, any other questions at the moment? There being none, I'd like
Just a clarification to Mike's point. So without this porch, would you still need the front setback?
No, no. The building, you can see the garage itself, the garage itself hasn't moved. That still needs the setback. And we had a little entryway in the front there that had a different setback than the 20.94 because we've expanded that deck.
Yeah, I'm not worried about what you're calling the deck on the
I mean the porch.
I meant the porch that's closest to the road. So without the porch, you wouldn't need to be here.
No, we wouldn't need to be here because the house itself
Okay, that's, that's
Yes, yes. That's not changing our need to be here.
Okay, thanks. That was just the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no other questions at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wished to speak for or against this application. I'd like to make the note that I don't think we had any butter letters or anything to reference to this, so that's nothing to read in to the records from there. So with that, I'm going to close that portion of it, bring it back to the board. And does anybody have any further questions? Of the applicant? There being none, any closing comments from the applicant? There being none, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Looks like a good plan.
Yeah, it's I don't know. Is there anything left on Pogus Park Road that needs to be rebuilt? Are you allowed, are you allowed to retire yet, Steve?
No, I've got another call for a lot down there.
We have the power to rename that road, the Steve Smith Memorial Park Road? I, no, as always, as always, I'm just going to condition this that we have the state permit on place before you, before the actual construction goes ahead, but that's the only condition that I can think of, Mr. Chair.
Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, motion to accept a request for variance to, for a front setback to replace a non-conforming structure with a more conforming structure with an attached deck, a portion of which will be, attached porch, portion of which will be in the front setback, ordinance 235-A. And to submit the documentation attached to the application, satisfying the five criteria for the variances. So I don't have to read them out loud again with the following condition, that the state permit from the Shoreland Protection Agency is on file before construction begins.
Very good, Gail. We have a motion.
I will second it.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
You don't need this, do you, Karen?
No.
It passes.
Thank you. So we will see you again.
Okay, next on the agenda is 2021-0039 variance at 176 Pleasant Street. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-33, maximum residential unit density to allow for the conversion of a single-family resident to a three-unit multifamily.
Okay, I did email you the modification. He's requesting a two-family, not a three, so, but the modification is more closer to conforming, so we don't need to renotice the others.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And Karen, for clarification, this is not, because I didn't get the, if I did, if I, I got it, I don't have it. So what I have in front of me was what was in our pack, and the portion of the short-term rental is off the table. This is not considering that.
It is density only for
Density-only variance. See, the other thing, if that comes, has to come in a separate because that's a special exception. It's done, addressed.
Fin, he would not be required to come here for a special exception for the short-term mortgage since it's his primary residence, so he'd be owner occupied.
Okay. I have, okay, so the applicant does live there?
But that, but we're just talking about density tonight anyway, so it's just this one application that we need to worry about.
All right, but I just, for the purposes of this hearing only, we're taking a one-family, turning it into a two-family.
Correct.
Or a two-unit. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, good evening.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Yep, Randy Bartlett, 176 Pleasant Street, Laconia. First, I apologize for some of the confusion. I was out of the country when the paperwork was prepared for this, and I didn't quite understand some of the dynamics of what needed to ask for, so that's where some of the confusion comes in. Nevertheless, I stood before you almost two years ago to make kind of the same request for a three-family in the Airbnb, which is, to my understanding, not a conversation of point. So before I get into the request for the two-family, if the public is here for or against, can we define whether they are or not? Because that, I was told from downstairs, we don't want to talk about Airbnb tonight. I don't want to bring it up to you if you don't want to hear about it, but if the public's here for or against, they at least deserve to hear what changes have been made to satisfy the needs of the city, special permit, and/or the neighbors.
This is your minute.
Okay, so, well, is there anyone here for or against? Can we ask that question? For the Airbnb piece?
Couple people.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we're not discussing the Airbnb part tonight.
Will the public be allowed to discuss the Airbnb part tonight?
It's allowed by right if
Very good. That's fine. That's all I needed to know because we've made
Wishes to come in and speak during the public session, they can talk about
Whatever they wish.
I guess theoretically, yeah.
I just don't want to, it's their minute to discuss it, but if they're going to discuss opposition to it tonight, I'd like to be able to explain to you what I've done to correct the matters for them and for you.
And what we normally say in this situation is, we're not discussing the Airbnb.
Very good, and we leave that well enough alone, and we'll move right on.
Because that's starting to scratch a sore that
Right, right, right. No, I completely understand that, but I did want to at least qualify. Thank you. Okay, so moving backwards, I'm sorry that I didn't come back to finish before, but, you know, two years ago, we had nine homes and nine businesses that are now sold and/or closed and/or gone for some reason or another, basically somewhat COVID-related over there in the neighborhood of the Riverbank House. So that Riverbank House has been sold, 72 Church Street has been sold, all the houses surrounding the neighborhood have been sold. Six or seven of the businesses closed, COVID-related, and the rest of them sold to the residents who were running them. So we're left here with the Airbnb to discuss in what we've done here is basically the same thing we did over that whole neighborhood, which was turn something that was old and rundown into something that's really nice and beautiful, and we're even putting a new roof on here come September 15th to finalize the thing. We painted it two years ago. So, but what's the real big deal tonight in lieu of the request is, we did make the amendment from a three to two based on suggestions made to us. I have spoke to four of the surrounding neighbors who made some comments about things, and one of them specifically said they didn't want to see a three-family there. So that isn't why I switched to go into a two-family, but I think it's very reasonable. We have parking ability without changing the green space, just putting some stone down to accommodate a four-unit apartment building. And we have six, seven, eight-unit apartment buildings surrounding us all over the neighborhood. So the request for two is a very minimal request. We have parking for five or six currently, right now in the thing, and you only need three for a two-unit building. So we're well within the constraints of the request for the bylaw, where the bylaw says how many units you can have. The real big deal is you're dealing with an eight-bedroom home, 6,000 square feet, and you can't sell a home today with eight bedrooms in it. You know, nobody buys homes like that. There are just not that many of us having that many. I spawn off that many in my own personal life, but realistically, a house like that can't be sold as a single-family home. So we'd like to at least get it to the two. It all falls within the constraints. If we go to the If we go to the bullet points, again, amending the discussion around Airbnb, if I just go to point one, and we skip over short-term housing, I just mentioned suitable as a single-family home, it's just the house that size being used for multipurpose is, is what most of the large home in the area have already converted to, whether or not they meet the parking requirements or constraints, I couldn't tell you, but we come far within the requests of the city and requirements for parking, so we're way over the need and way under the request for, for a double-family home. In the spirit of the ordinance, apartment buildings with five and six units already exist, which I already mentioned in the neighborhood with ample, with what I believe to be ample parking, my request would be no different than theirs of surrounding properties of existing apartments, and the said request would be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Let's see, three, the property, we're not discussing that part tonight. I guess we have to talk about the parking issue because what we had before was a 12-bedroom sober house with me living there, and also, what we're not supposed to discuss, Airbnb, but the parking was an issue. I understand now why it wasn't an issue before because when it was sober living home, as a resident living there, you could park on the street, now you can't, so I understand the transition, and we're working those details out with the city. However, I've spent over $300,000 on this home, making it a luxury home, and even try to rent it out as a two-family home is gonna be a chore, but at least it would give somebody, if I sell the house, an opportunity to live there free and rent the other half out to another tenant, when maybe cover some of their costs for running a house this size, because it's no small dollar to, to run a house this big. The rest of it, again, discuss what we're not supposed to discuss, let me go to point four. If the variance is granted, the values of surrounding premise would be, would not be diminished, simply because any multifamily home is of greater value in, in commercial use as, than it is residential, so the minute a house is comped, if it's comped for a higher price, the rest of the neighborhood comps go up, that's the nature of the real estate business, always has been, and unfortunately, always will be. Let me see. That's, again, discussion point we're not supposed to talk about. Point five, unnecessary hardship. There's no other use for the property this size, a single-family home with eight bedrooms is simply not feasible in the current market and surrounding market or the surrounding neighborhood. The, the request is reasonable for the simple reason, again, there's no other use for the property this size, a single-family home within, with eight bedrooms is simply not feasible in the current market surrounding, and also, there are many homes like this in the surrounding neighborhood. Let's see, that B is, if the criteria sub-paragraphs is not established to any, just the fact that there's no extra green space required, we're gonna be taking away from to establish this, we get to keep the driveway the same size, we don't have to change any of the external structure to support a two-family, there's ample parking, so no visual changes to the property. So, you know, we fit right within the, the constraints of everything that's surrounding us, and I'm pretty sure that covers most of the points. I think the, one of the biggest points I'd like to make tonight is I'm here requesting half of what I could be requesting. I don't know if somebody bought the house, if they'd come in and ask for more, but I'm not, and that should keep it quiet over there, it should keep it smaller over there, and it should keep the neighbors happy over there, which I think is probably the most important point of tonight's discussion, even though it's not pertaining to the two-family home.
So, you're done?
I think so, I mean, you know, the only other option that we have, should we not be granted the variances, you go back to a 12-to-14 bedroom sober home, and those guys are not short-term, they're long-term, so they're six months or more, which fits them back into the ability to park on the street, which, again, kind of surprises me, we never had any problems before with people parking on the street. I remember early, early on, eight years, nine years ago, when I bought it, the church, when it was busy, on Sunday, used to wrap all the way around my house around the neighborhood, and I never had a problem with it, you know what I mean, it was like, a lot of cars, but I, I, I get it, but when people live there long-term, which is really the only other option I have, if we're not able to convert to the two-family, is to go back to that because the house, again, is too big to support itself as a single-family, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna come here alone and, and be like, single-handedly haunt my own, my own house because there's too many rooms and too big for one person.
Okay, I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
You want to make it from a single to a two-unit?
Yes.
And, and reading through this, you're gonna live in one unit, right?
Yep.
And that means the other unit you're gonna rent out.
That's correct.
And one of the two units is gonna have the ability to use the pool area, and one unit won't?
Yeah, you can't, there's no way, that is precisely correct. If, again, I'm trying to avoid talking Airbnb here, but you're bringing it up, the way it's designed now is, it's exclusive, if you rent one piece, you do not, the second person does not get to use the pool, there's no shared space. And the party sizes right now is four for one opportunity and six for the other, so I've reduced my capacity to try to accommodate the neighborhood from 16 down to 10. So, like I said, I know we're not supposed to be talking Airbnb tonight, but that seems to be a point of contention, is like, the noise-
But if you rent it as an apartment, right, you're gonna rent one as an apartment, does the apartment have the-
If it, well, I don't intend to go that way, but if I were to go that way, there would have to be a discussion amongst the two people who rent as to whether or not they, and actually, it would be, I'm sorry, it's just one rental, so it would have to be a discussion between me and the person who rents as to whether or not we're gonna share the pool area. Now, I'm a lake guy, so if I don't sell the property, and I do intend to sell the property, I'll be out on the lake, not in my pool. Even when I owned the home alone in the very, very beginning, I was rarely in that pool, I was out on the lake in the summer.
Okay.
But regardless how it shakes out, apartment, temporary rental, whatever, there's only one party allowed to use that courtyard at any given time.
Okay.
And currently, that party maxes out as six, where we were 16.
And that's where you were talking about, because property is specialized from guest rents, the luxury unit and said guests are exclusive to the pool area, alleviating the number from 10 to four to six guests.
That's correct.
So, it's, you're gonna-
But moving right along, you know, we're talking about a third unit still.
Well, this is because we're- Yeah, I got a procedural question here, two-family units are allowed in a general, residential, general home. If this is a two-family unit, and it's not a multifamily unit, he doesn't even need us.
He needs a density variance.
He needs a variance for density, though, because he doesn't meet the requirement for two units, for land-wise, the size of the lot, so that he is doing the right thing by coming before the board and requesting the variance for density.
For density, this is, so this is purely now a density question?
Right, and a minimal one at that, correct?
All this is about, is just, just density.
This is just about density.
Just about density.
Is this the RS?
Shouldn't it be RS and not RG? That's why I'm asking.
Or RG.
All right, it's just a two-family, I mean, they're two-family-
This is the RG district, yes, so they're allowed to do a two-family in RG.
By right.
You still have to have the density.
With the density.
You can, you can change the use to the two-family, if you had, if he had, if his lot was, I don't know, 1,000 square feet larger, for example, and he met the calculations for a two-unit, he wouldn't need to be before the board at all, he could just come in and do an administrative-
So, we're just doing a density, we're always doing here is a waiver for density to allow a two, two, two apartments where there was more-
All we're doing is, you're, we're deciding whether to grant or not the variance for density.
A variance for density-
To allow for two units.
To allow for two units on this property-
Right.
Where there is one unit now.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
What we're trying to say, Mr. Bartlett, is we don't care what it was or what it may-
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, you know, it's just, the questions came up, and it's like, I'm trying not to answer them, but also, if I can add, it's my understanding-
So, the math, if you, if you did the math out now, density is 1.92 when you factor it out, so we're really only asking for a variance for, to round it up to the tip.
0.8.
Yeah.
A point.
Right.
We're just looking for a density variance.
0.8.
So, this is an RG?
Yes.
Yeah, oh.
So, with municipal and water, they would need 10,000 square feet?
It's a lot of record.
It's a lot of record.
Right.
Right.
What do you mean by that?
Yeah.
So, if you, if you look at the density requirement for RG, I don't have my charts on me, so it's six units per acre, so we take the units, the, the lot size that it is, which is-
Okay, now I understand, sorry.
Which is .32, multiply that by six, and that gives you the density for that lot, and that comes out to be the 1.92, so he falls short of that, of reaching that two.
Just by 0.8.
So, that's why he's asking for the variance.
Okay. I understand.
And I think that maybe was part of the reason why we suggested to go from three to two, so that we didn't actually have to ask for too much leniency here this evening, because we're so close to meeting the bylaw requirements to become-
When you go to the three-unit, there, there's a lot, a lot more variables in there that, a lot more approvals to go through, so.
Okay, so in other words, and by right, six people can live in that house regardless of which apartments they live in?
Or not.
No, 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 so, so you're looking at the-
RG.
That's six units per acre, so if it was a one-acre lot, you could-
Okay, so I gotta do the math.
You could have the six units there, since it's only .32.
32.
Sounds like beer.
But Randy, still, reading Article 3, the last sentence, it says, "The third unit will be used by you when you're in town." It sounds like you're still having three units there, are you gonna rent two?
No, then, no, the way that, I, this is getting back into the Airbnb discussion, but we are simply going to have two units, how it shakes out with the city and how we do this Airbnb thing, there's a lot of different ways to deal with that, skin that cat through booking arrangements, but it will be one, I don't know how it's gonna be. Like I said, I think that we need to go back to the fact that I'm asking for .08 on density and a very minimal request to go from a single to a double-family home with appropriate parking requirements.
Is there one kitchen in this house, or more than one kitchen?
No, there's more than one kitchen, and those issues are also being arranged or discussed with the building department, as well as a floor plan was done on Saturday of the entire building to help the city understand exactly what's going on in that house.
Okay.
So, if you'd like, I can address that for the board. So, the applicant did come in and speak with the director, myself, and Karen, and there are a number of kitchens in there, and he will need an after-the-fact building permit. If the board so owes to approve this, to bring the property into compliance by having two-
Kitchen.
Two units that meet code and having only two kitchens on the property, I think there's, you have three kitchens?
Yes, the, the one that we don't call, the small unit, we remove, we just remove the stove, yeah.
City would have to go in there and inspect and validate that all of these things now meet code and meet the intent of whatever the board decides tonight.
Okay, okay.
And we are, we're prepared to meet those requirements as well, we've already discussed it.
Okay. I, I, I'm, then I'm set, now I understand why, what we're looking for is simply, and I'm sorry I didn't get your amended application, you're, we're just looking for a very minor density variance, that's it.
Did you see it?
Yeah, I apologize for all the confusion, but I was not here to go through it personally with the city, so it was just difficult to, I guess, get the communication straight.
Okay, well, for two, for a two-family apartment in that, in that zone, you only need, what, three spaces, 1.5 per unit?
Right.
Let's not overthink this.
Much more than that.
And you got, you got four or five there now, so, we're, yeah, we're just doing a really minor density adjustment here. That's the way I see it. Okay, all right, so-
Thank you.
Let's not confuse things with, with too much information.
So, any other questions at the moment?
I have none.
I'm, I'm still concerned about the third kitchen, you know, you take it out and you put it back in and have three units again.
Well, you have to come back-
Yeah, that's up to the building department to keep tabs on myself and/or another owner, but I'm not that kind of guy, so.
Are there three separate entrances, like three apartments now?
There are, only to the extent of this summer, when unfortunately, one of the residents of the Riverbank House died, I said I was not going to have unsupervised, long-term sober living anymore, so in my absenteeism, I had a door that led through to two units, made into a wall, which I believe when we finish will be a door again, which will bring us back to our normal way that we were.
I'm okay with two units, Randy, but I'm not okay with three, that's-
I'm completely with you, and there won't, there's no need for it, we've already figured a really good plan to do this with two, and it's feasible and workable, and, and will meet the city's needs and hopefully, the neighbors' needs too. I've met with four, one, two, Bladucky, Bladucky, Tachi, and then the one gentleman that wrote last, I met with him finally today, I finally caught him, and every one of them said they're in favor for what I'm doing, so we're in pretty good shape. And they're my directors.
Any other questions at the moment?
About ours.
The applicant, no.
Okay, you may have a seat for the moment, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody would like to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time. Direct all questions and statements to the board.
Sure.
Okay, and introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name, excuse me, my name's Dennis Bothamley, I live at 108 Shore Drive in Laconia, and I'm here representing the UUSL, the Unitarian Universalist Church, that little white church between 176 Pleasant and the Bean Funeral Home. I'm not exactly sure what I'm objecting to at this point, I don't think we have a problem with a minor density change. Our concern, as you can tell from the letter that our parish chair, Linda Tererliger, sent, had to do with the chronic parking problem that has existed in that area, and what we felt was a lack of adequate planning and forethought about parking for the three unit that we saw. And we will be back again if there is additional need for parking spaces other than just a two-unit, I don't think we would have a problem with that. Like you say, there's three or four spaces there without much problem, I can't see us objecting to that at all. But I think Linda's letter says it all for us, and if it, if this grows into a three or grows into something else, I agree with Mr. Dilekia, I don't have a problem with two, I will have a problem with three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application? Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, so therefore, the only letter I had at hand was from the-
There were two that I did email you, I brought you a hard copy, just in case you didn't receive them, but I did that last week.
Ah, okay.
I'll note the record from the, from the copies and from Mr. Bethel.
All right, from the Bethel, "Budding the Property," they're written as a homeowner of budding the property, and the question namely, 176 Pleasant Street, concerning this property, Mr. Bartlett has requested a variance to convert this single-family home, which it hasn't been treated as any- which it hasn't been treated as anyhow, to a multifamily home. So, once again, it's not a multifamily home.
Correct, this was received.
Two families, so, we're not quite sure if this is still relevant to a two-family home, so, if anybody is interested, I can pass it around. The next one is from one ninety-two Pleasant Street, I can't read the names. Oh, Louis and Karen Kappa?
Copy or copy.
Yep, they're po, they oppose rezoning of one seventy-six to multifamily, once again, we're not discussing multifamily, we're discussing a, uh, two-unit, and. So I don't know if this is relevant anymore or not either, so did y'all wanna look at that too?
The letters are important, just because they say multifamily instead of two-family, they still have concerns, so.
Right, well, that's why I'm passing.
Our pro-aiskill, well, look at this first one.
Oh, I, I think those came in our email, but these, these I've actually had an opportunity to read, I, I.
I did not.
Okay, so.
I live right around the corner, and there's been the traffic, car parking, closing the sidewalks, blocking the sidewalks, there's been issues. And I'm afraid that Randy's gonna rent out two apartments and keep a loo, another one there.
But that would be a three, which would be a multi.
That's my worry, that's.
But if it's only approved for two, and everybody plays croquet by the rules.
Yeah.
So, before we get into discussions about that, let me bring it back and let's finish the questions and stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Have you closed the public hearing, I'm just for clarification?
I was just fixing to close it.
Just making sure.
So there's no mu, no other input from the public on this, so therefore, I would like to go ahead and close it to the public, and bring it to the board, does anybody else have any other questions of the applicant? There being none, any closing comments from the applicant?
Uh, only that I hope that you concede my request is far within the constraints of what the neighborhood already exists, and, uh, causing any assumption of this property, uh, without permission, there would be an assumption. And, uh, had the Riverbank for nine years over there, uh, followed the rules to the T, and I've proven that, and I've stood by my word, and I've been absolutely honest in all, no matter what happens. The mistake I made this summer was unfortunately, after JP Dodd, I said no more of this sober living, which led to this big, larger rental, which led to these problems, and those problems have been rectified, and those are well aware of the changes. I've made to do that, and I also have a few other changes that have been made, as well as driving the sidewalk to make sure nobody parks on the damn thing. You know, just, I'm trying to make sure everybody just needs a minute.
Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I, two-family is appropriate for that neighborhood, as long as all the conditions fit the building code, and, um, you know, the density requirement to me is minimal. Uh, we're just asking for a point oh eight variance off a, off of density, so I have no problems with this application. Um, I'm not gonna comment on what preceded this, what goes forward is not purview of this board, we have police department for parking problems, um, so that's my two cents worth, for whatever it's worth.
There's a lot of concern over, because the first part of the application was a three unit and stuff.
Right, yeah, I mean.
And that always haunts the back of everybody's mind and stuff, and there's, other than the applicant saying they have no intent, uh, and I don't think there's ever been any reason in the past to show that there would have been intent, um, in any of the other previous work we've done, along this, we've seen numerous opportunities where houses have been, extra kitchens and extra bedrooms and extra apartments have always popped up, and we hear these things throughout, because eventually, you know, it comes to, they get found out about. Okay, there's, as best we can do is just look at what we are looking at, as far as the facts and the evidence that are provided to us, and try and make our best judgment on all the facts that were provided to us, they, they're gonna have to, uh, get building permits to do all the modifications to the house, they're gonna have to, uh, make changes to the interior and exterior of the house to meet the guidelines that will, uh, be provided to them that he has to follow, as far as making it a two-unit apartment and stuff. And then, that's basically all the city can do, after the city's done its due diligence and, and done their inspections and stuff, it's kinda all we can do, you know, and then, you know, that's my thought about it, you know, so, is. Since it is, uh, something that is, uh, available, you know, and if it wasn't for density, it would just be a permit problem, you know, to go forth and just get a permit, you know, so to me, I have to agree with you, Gal, I, it's very minimal at this point. You know, it's very minimal, there's enough parking, there's enough space in the house, so, you know, one of my little hot buttons have always been making closet-sized apartments. Okay, uh, you know, to me, that's not very humane, and I never could understand why there's not a minimum standard in the city as far as square footage. You know, accessory dwellings and everything else we do, but, uh, for someone to say, I got a large walk-in closet, I wanna make a bedroom out of it and rent it out is beyond me, but that has nothing to do with this, it's just me rambling. So, anybody else?
You don't, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Would this, under the proposed eight thousand square feet, would it affect this in this zone for reduced density proposed?
If we were to reduce density?
Yeah, I mean, in discussions, when we get this, would this be affected under that type of discussion?
Oh, dirt, for like, during master plan, as we're talking about?
Right.
Uh, this would probably be one of those zones that it might see an increase in density.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept application twenty twenty-one zero zero three nine, looking for density relief. I don't think it'd be contrary to the public interest in that we're looking to provide increased housing in this community. This is, uh, number two, if the variance were granted, dispirited, the ordinance would be observed. Really, this is a large building, um, and, uh, we just, people aren't having those families anymore, so, in it, it would be reasonable to be able to use it as a two-family house, or whatever we consider family to be nowadays. Said, um, substantial justice, sure, in that it begins to stabilize the house instead of having, um, a lot of different people, um, staying and leaving. This would, uh, probably help the neighborhood. I don't think it would diminish the, uh, value of the surrounding houses. And I find that under five, if not a hardship, this is a reasonable use for this house.
All right. So we have a motion?
I, I'll second that, the only thing I wanna add under the hardship, um, thing is that, that we, that it is reasonable, but there's another standard also, and that's that there's no real relationship between the general public purposes of this ordinance, the den, our density ordinance, and, and the specific application, there is a relationship. I mean, it's just a big house and a small lot, and that's really what defines the density that's been there a long time. So, with that, I'll, with that caveat that we meet, uh, standard I and, you know, one and two, then, um, I'll second it.
If, if the board was willing, I, I don't know if you could perhaps add a condition in there that the owner would be required to get an after-the-fact building permit to bring the property into compliance?
Okay, we could put that, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yes.
Is that okay with your motion, and then I'll second that with the condition that he gets the after-the-fact building permit, um, and meets the, brings the house up to.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, I forgot.
We like to.
And, um, obviously, the rest is up to.
Oh, that's all right, just wanted to make sure.
That's why I second, the rest is up to code enforcement.
So you got that secondary?
Yep, yep, all local permits.
Okay, so, do you accept the modifications to your motion?
I do, I wouldn't wanna be a child whose friend who lived next door to me could swim in the swimming pool, but I couldn't. But, hey.
Yeah, I'm.
Kind of the way it is.
So.
Okay, can I just, uh, for the minutes, a clarification on the motion, the motion was to approve for a two-family.
Correct.
Right.
Just making sure that's, okay.
And, and to bring it in compliance with the after-the-fact building permit.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to make sure it was stated clearly for the minutes, thank you.
Okay.
And that any other modifications, it would still have to come back and get other approvals, right, there's, okay. So we're all good?
Right.
All right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, it passes.
Man, I'm gonna build my own swimming pool.
All right, we have one more application. Tonight? Application number two zero two one dash zero zero four zero, it's a special exception on twenty-three Summit Ave. Applicant is requesting a variance, it's not a variance, a special exception.
Exception.
Okay. Requesting a special exception from Article seven, Section two thirty-five dash forty-one A, to allow for the installation of a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Clears the room.
I cleared the room, I feel bad, I have no audience, usually it's full back there.
Oh, we're here, don't worry.
You guys are like the comic relief, though, so I gotta take that all this stride, I'm getting used to this, I, I never paid attention in civics classes, I learned a lot in the last year.
So if you'd introduce yourself for the record and explain to us how we can help.
Sure, thank you, uh, Gregory Kabelski, um, uh, we live at twenty-three Summit Ave, uh, Laconia. Uh, my brother, my wife, and his wife, we bought the property from my parents two years ago, uh, my parents still live with us there. We, um, you know, we came to the board last year and got approval for splitting the lot, uh, into two, uh, so there'll be two taxable lots, one twenty-three Summit Ave, and then the other will be thirty-three Summit Ave. Uh, my brother will take the thirty-three, I'm gonna have the, the twenty-three. We're working with the state right now to finish their approvals, because we have to go to Shoreland there and, um, finalize that. Uh, unfortunately, we took an attorney to that process, and it's taken longer than I appreciate, but I guess that's how attorneys get paid. Um, so we're still waiting for that finalization from Shoreland and the actual, uh, our, our request, but it's, it's well within the means of the request to them, as you saw last time, with a sewer on the lot. We've taken an active process of getting the water brought down the street, so we're still working on that, but we have hired an engineer, has plans, has worked with the town already, now they're taking that to the state to get that finalized with them, um, and ready to put that water line in once the state approves that, so it'll, it'll, I've, I've, add value that way. So in this request, um, as I'm building up twenty-three Summit, we want to do that ADU, um, for, uh, my parents at the current time. We will still have the primary residence, that'll be ours and own, we're not looking to rent either property at this point, um, but we will, the primary residence of twenty-three Summit Ave is, is with my wife and my house. But the ADU would be replacing what's currently a, it's, uh, taxed as a, uh, a cabin. Uh, we've never used it as a cabin, it's been there twenty years when, since we've owned it, or my family's owned it, it's, it's treated as a shed, it has water to it today from our well, and it has sewer today from the sewer, but we wanna take that down and put it in a, um, AD unit there, that's gonna be four hundred and almost four hundred fifty feet of living space, with storage space underneath it, beneath it, it's all within the setbacks of the property. And so with what our proposed houses, we're still working through those elements, but with the proposed house that we're putting in there, and with that EU, we're still within, um, you know, there's still eighty percent green space in that property, so we're not, you know, deteriorating green space at all. Um, and we're very focused on trying to maintain that look, we're not trying to take away from it, but taking down that cabin and improving it with a better overall facility really is gonna be an improvement for the area. So I think we've met most of their criteria, but it is an exception to put an ADU on a lot, and that's what we came here to do.
Any questions of the applicant?
No, I, I understand what he, what they're trying to do, we're pretty familiar with this lot, to be honest with you, so.
Yeah.
I, um, you know, I, um, I'm, I'm just waiting for the helicopter pad.
Um, I, I don't have a helicopter, I do have a pilot's license, but I don't have a helicopter license, so I do use the Laconia airport.
It's like the Kennedy compound, you know, I mean, you know, Joe and whatever buy, buy a nice house, they got a bunch of kids and they keep.
Oh, I, I was laughing at the comment, 'cause, you know, I come from a family of eight kids, so I'm like, eight bedrooms, that sounds nice, we had, we had three when I grew up, so I don't know what eight bedrooms looks like, but yeah, that sounds great.
Catholics when you need.
There you go, right?
I'll share one bathroom.
Yeah, so. Two, we had two, to be honest with you, yeah, yeah, we had two, it was pretty safe.
You know your parents is one, so, you know, the eight of you were left on a free-for-all.
It wasn't pretty, but, you know, we, we, but they made us all tighter, I guess, you know, you grew up that way.
Give me my pancake.
Um, and, and from what I, okay, I have no questions for the applicant, I, I, I understand.
Anybody else have any questions?
Pretty well presented to us, I get it.
Okay, you may have a seat for a second, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I'll bring it back to the board for any other questions of the applicant.
Are we, are we still going to be within our, uh, green space requirements here?
Yes.
Yes, we'll still, we'll have eighty percent, sorry, it's sixty-five percent is the requirement for that particular area, we're gonna have eighty percent.
Yeah, you still got.
And we're using that eighty percent because we're actually working with the state to say, another reason why this should be a simple approval, but we're very thoughtful on that eighty percent.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant?
No.
Maybe you can rent this out, you know, his A, his ADU, and then you'd have a lake instead of a pool.
You got a pond, I don't.
That's right. Got a pool or a pond, a pond's better for you, yes.
I said you wanted a pool, I mean.
You gotta fight my parents for it, though, they're very, uh, they're excited to get out of the, we have a big, you know, big, um, you know, it's an extension to the house that was there, was the original house that was there, they live in there, and they wanna get closer to see the lake, I'm like, all right, I guess that makes sense, so. You have to wait till they pass away, which they'll probably outlive me.
Oh, they will, don't you worry.
Trust me on that one.
Any other questions? There being none, any closing comments?
No, I thank you for your time, and Karen, thank you for helping get this through, but, get the paperwork in and all that, I'm, I'm learning a process, I appreciate the education, I really do.
It was a gold star application, as far as from a civilian application and not like a Steve Smith, or.
Yeah, the lawyer route didn't work for the state, it's taken us five months and we've gone nowhere, and, and they haven't even sent the final letter, and I'm like, but the state doesn't even know we're asking yet, they're probably a simple yes, I hope, but we'll see.
Stick with me, kid, we'll go nowhere fast.
You may have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. It appears that it meets all the conditions to.
Yeah, I mean, back to, what, what, this is shorefront residential, or Shoreline, yeah.
Shorefront residential, yeah.
Okay, and we have no density issues here, putting multiple families. Okay, and we have no density issues here, putting multiple families on this as far as number of.
Nope, cause the ADU doesn't change the density at all for the request.
Okay.
And the law is large enough and it meets the requirements for, you have a detached.
I do have a question, and this is just for me learning. If this were to be, and I, I completely get this. If this were to be an Airbnb unit that they could rent, would there be any?
They, they could not do an ADU and do Airbnb. It's specifically written in to the ordinance that you can't do ADUs and have.
It is specifically remembered.
You can't Airbnb the AD.
Correct.
Yeah.
U, unit.
Yeah, and Airbnb is a short-term rental. It's just, that's just a marketing.
And I don't think a house like this wants to have Airbnb behind them or in front of them, or whichever the case may be. That doesn't make logic to me, but that's just me. Okay. Like to entertain a motion?
Or make a motion that we grant? Application Z zero two zero two zero dash zero zero eight eight. Variance, requesting a variance from.
It's a special exception.
What am I reading?
Turn the page.
Oh, that's a notice of action. Oh, okay, that's from the last one. Doi. All right, Blake, sorry, I'm tired.
It's okay.
Two zero two one zero zero four zero is your application number.
Okay, all right, yeah, granting a special exception to where the exception is going to twenty-three Summit Avenue in Laconia. That, from Article seven, section fifty-one, which would permit an accessory dwelling unit on twenty-three, thing is that the use is specifically authorized in this chapter. Their requested use is not gonna create any undue traffic or impaired pedestrian safety. The use is not gonna, well, he's bringing water to the property, so, you know, I mean, that's already been satisfied. There is a sewer there. I don't see any drainage issues. Just, this is kind of already an existing little building there, so there's not gonna be any issues with that. I don't see any excessive demand for police, fire, protection, school, solid waste, anything. I'm not worried about that. All the provisions in the ADU ordinance as it is right now are fulfilled. There's no health, safety, general welfare of the public or detrimental use to the character of the neighborhood. It's I, I, I don't know if there's it's consistent with what other people are doing in the, in that particular neighborhood. And it is an appropriate location. It'll actually be a little upgrade because he has taken down an old cabin that's you know, putting up a nice little nice little contained unit. And it is consistent with, certainly consistent with our master plan, whether his folks live there or not. It does provide another potential living. It provides another living space in the Laconia area, in, in Laconia.
For the nieces and nephews?
Well, I mean, for, you know, I mean, as time goes by, the next person that buys it may just decide to rent that space to someone like me or you, Mike, who doesn't wanna live on a big property and mow the lawn anymore. You just never know. I mean, there are days, hey, come on. There are days when I wake up and I think I live in two rooms and a bathroom and I gotta mow this lawn. You know? And, and you've got much more to worry about. So, that's my motion.
God bless you.
Would you like to condition it that they have the permit from the state?
Yeah, the same conditions that we've approved for everything else. Before construction builds, we get all those, all those permits in order. They've been buried. I, I have no, I don't, I don't have any concern with that at all. I mean, I think that, but we can condition it with the permitting, just like the variance requests that we approved before.
Maintains our consistency.
Yep.
Second?
Yes. I'll second that.
Discussion?
You know what? I just wanna know that these people have come in and actually picked up on what these boards are about. And I really appreciate the fact that you and your brother have brought this as forward as well as you have.
So, with that being said, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Passes. Enjoy.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, by the way. I, I really.
And we're always, you know, we got a four short board tonight. We're always looking, even though we got two outlets, once you get all settled in there, we're always looking for another outlet, so you too can play in the pool.
You know, it's funny, I, I, the more and more as I get closer.
The more you know about it, you know?
I got the, I got the five kids. I need to get them to college first. That's the quest, you know? I got one left to get to college, so. Thank you again. I appreciate it. Again, I appreciate what you all do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Other business?
I don't have any.
Anything from the planning department?
So, it was kind of brought to our attention that sometimes this board meets more frequently on Tuesdays due to holidays or during the budgeting season. We're asked to move to, to Tuesdays. And I believe Dean and Karen thought that it might be better.
I've mentioned that myself going.
Yeah, Dean mentioned it.
I think six of the meetings, over half of them are on Tuesdays.
It's not gonna be convenient for me. So I, I like, I know, I like Monday meetings.
Okay.
That's my, that's my say. I'm not the only person on this board, Steve. I, I, how does anybody else feel?
Nope, and I was just bringing it forward, but boop, easy peasy, no issues.
I mean, I, I like Mondays. Do you, Mike?
Mondays can be rough.
Oh, Mondays are rough.
No, I'm just saying. No, it doesn't make a difference to me. I come and participate on this board because I respect what it does.
I work every other Monday and Tuesday, so.
It's so, in other words, it's, it's a wash.
It sucks for you either way.
It's just how the, the, how many, sometimes there's five Tuesdays in a month and it changes my schedule around, so.
Depends how the calendar breaks is.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that.
We're just throwing it out there, just, we didn't know if people wanna make that change. If not, no big loss.
I, I agree that it's inconvenient with the central moves.
Because we love doing these meetings.
There you go.
Yes.
We love serving the public.
If you would tell Kalina and Dean I can't make the Wednesday I have to work Wednesday because they're so shorthanded, they're begging.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna miss nothing but a bunch of ticks, so.
Don't forget the mosquitoes.
I'd like to see.
Bring up our, our raise, our annual raise?
Well, they'll give you a hundred percent raise. They'll stamp a hundred percent raise, which is better than you're gonna get anywhere.
That's the best cost we've been paying these ever. I will, I'll let Kalina and Dean.
Thank you, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a good night.
Good night.
One and all.